Twenty-four meeting, the Sandusky City Commission will have an invocation offered by myself, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Lord, we ask for your wisdom as we make some tough decisions in this meeting. Help us to carefully consider the relevant information that's been gathered. Help us to be innovative as we brainstorm solutions and help us to wisely evaluate our options, considering the pros and the cons. Help us to be unified in making the best possible decision and to effectively carry them out. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the five of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As far as you call the role.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Fargo, here. Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Bajali?
Here.
Mr. Coons?
Here.
Mr. Crable?
Here. Commissioners, you have before you the minutes of our meeting of June the 24th, 2024. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddy?
I move that we accept the minutes of the June 24th meeting as presented.
Second? There have been a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, motion be approved in hearing, no objection. That motion is approved. Tonight, we have a public hearing on the 2025 tax budget. This hearing will be conducted by our Director of Finance, Michelle Reader. Is this a public hearing? We'll entertain questions from both the audience and from commissioners at the conclusion.
Thank you. So, the tax budget, we have to do this annually, per Ohio Revised Code, Section 5705. We must have this tax budget for 2025 to the county auditor by July 20th of each year. Prior to the dismissal to the county, a public hearing must be conducted, which is what we're doing tonight. Failure to submit this tax budget could result in a denial of receiving future local government funds. The tax budget allows the Budget Commission over at the county to review the anticipated and historical revenue and expenditures for each fund. The tax budget is comprised of current year estimated revenue and expenditures, along with two years, two previous years of actual revenue and expenditure figures. The Budget Commission will review the tax budget and generally looks for any over or underfunding. Once approved, this tax budget helps determine funding for next year. But as a reminder, this is nowhere near a final budget for 2025. We have to have the first draft of the 2025 budget out by November 1st of each year, so we'll have that done here later this year. City Commission will need to approve an initial temporary budget for 2025 later this year and ultimately pass the 2025 budget by March 31st, 2025. So, we have some time to work on this budget. This is just the first preliminary step. As previously stated, this tax budget legislation is a requirement by ORC and must be approved annually. And I do have it on the screen. There's tons of numbers. I know you guys have had the opportunity to look at it, and if the public has any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions, there? Questions from the public regarding this presentation? Questions from commission regarding this presentation? Ms. Reader, you are off the hook.
Thank you very much.
I'll declare this public hearing closed. Any residents with comments regarding tonight's agenda, please step to the podium and share with us your name and address and your agenda comments. And I'd ask you to keep your comments to three minutes, so Mr. Hastings, our official timekeeper, does not have to implore the hook.
Tim Burkey, 1305 Columbus Avenue. I'm here to address the proposed change to Robert's Rules of Order. In my 37 years of my career, I've worked a lot with those rules, and they have a purpose. I watched your last meeting, and I think there was a little bit of confusion about three words: through the chair. Through the chair is there to say a couple of things. One is, the chair is the person who is the referee, the umpire, the person who has to make decisions. And I hope this never comes about for this commission. My 37 years, I've been in rooms where boards or trustees had a packed room of 50, 60 people, there was television camera, and the heat was on. And those are the types of moments I don't wish upon you, but hear me, they can happen. They can happen for the silliest of reasons, and all of a sudden, you've got a crowd. And somebody has to be the umpire, and that is your president. So, when you say through the chair, what you're doing is you're saying to that, to your umpire, "Mr. Umpire, you're in charge," and it's saying to the participant in the audience, "Here's the umpire." And that's an important role. I've been in meetings where people have gone up in front of the chair and yelled and pointed their fingers, where crowds have been out of control. And I would hope that would never happen in our community, but it can happen. I voted for most of you on this commission, and my wife, Betsy, and I both did so for your consideration to be contributors. And I would caution you to be careful in moving away from Robert's Rules of Order, because what it can lead to is disruption. We're a democratic republic. The democratic side occurred when you were elected. The republic side says, "You're in charge. You're the decision-makers." So, I would ask you to always keep that in mind, that a group of people coming to a meeting don't make the decision for you. Yes, you can be respectful and let them speak their words, but you are the decision-makers with that power. I'll close with this. I'm publishing a historic novel this fall, and part of it is, covers World War II. And there was a story where a father, after Pearl Harbor in Brooklyn, said to his three sons, "You're going to go sign up, because this country cannot fail." So, I put that in the opening page of my book, but I added something underneath that that I think we all own. Our communities must not fail. We must always keep the presence and the honor and the dignity in our meetings and address each other respectfully. If I were in your shoes, I wouldn't eliminate those words. They have a purpose. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Burkey. Additional comments from the audience on agenda items?
Wesley Poole, 1939, East Old Gate. First of all, if you would, in the information that was put on the website, I didn't see Section 312, a Rules of Order there. I just saw what you had for your rules. So, I had to go look on my own, and I could not find through the chair any place in Robert's Rules of Order. And it doesn't mean it's not there, it just means the version I have doesn't. I'd appreciate it if you would present that tonight, that it actually says that. Beyond that, I recommend that you adopt the amendment. And the reason you need to adopt the amendment is that, obviously, first of all, I support what you're trying to, what's been trying to accomplish by that. Through the chair is redundant, and the, my reading of rules says that the chairman is responsible to acknowledge or anyone who wants to speak. Once you've acknowledged them and given them the floor, the need for every other third or fourth sentence, or when you take a deep breath, to genuflect to the chair and ask again for it to be recognized does not make a lot of sense. It just disrupts the conversation. So, if a person, say the engineer, has got the floor and gives a report, he's got, he's been given the floor by the chair to begin with. After the report, the chair asks, "Are there any questions from the staff?" And the, from the commission, commissioners say, ask for permission to speak, they're recognized, the conference, they've already been recognized. What is the purpose of staff continually saying through the chair? First of all, we all know that. It's part of the rules. It's written in how it, how Roberts works. All conversation is through the chair. It simply disrupts it. So, if you're going to vote no on this, I would ask that the chairperson, please give us a reason for it that would say what is accomplished, explain what is accomplished by reinserting yourself into a conversation of questions from other commissioners to staff or whoever they're talking to. It just seems like this is just a ritual that serves no purpose. And for that reason, I suggest, and I'm assuming that the law director, law department, has approved what's written here, because then if they have the idea of what you're trying to do, you should just pass it and move on. Of all the things we have to work about, discuss trying to, and staff's the only people that says through the chair. If you've noticed, I've been here for almost three minutes. I didn't say through the chair. You gave me the floor, and I gave, told you what I had to say. And I think that's the most effective. The commissioner who brought this up was absolutely right. I would suggest an amendment, consider this. On, the president reserves the right to declare any question or responses being out of order under the rules. I suggest that you change that, change reserves, be replaced with maintains the order, maintains the right, and change the end of it to say, "Under Robert's Rules of Order." If you're going to follow Roberts, then it should be under Roberts. I think it's redundant to rewrite that. The chair already has the ability to rule something out of order. Roberts says precisely under what circumstances that should be and what the remedy is. And so, I highly suggest that if you're going to do this, that you make that small change. Maintains the right, because it already exists, and what they have the right to, so it's very clear for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Additional comments regarding tonight's agenda items?
Chris Whedle, 403 St. Adams. One of the main tenets of Robert's Rules of Order is that the chair is always to be impartial, always. The chair ever wants to speak for or against something, there is step down. That is in Robert's Rules of Order, and Roberts is codified in the city charter. The chair is to be impartial. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Whedle. Additional comments regarding agenda items?
Hi, Brian Stanley, 444 East Market Street. I want to speak on behalf of item number three of the regular agenda, the development agreement with the Warren Street, Washington properties. As a nearby, as an adjacent homeowner, I do support the development of the residential community that is proposed. However, I do have major concerns about the end use of this, given the current zoning is commercial services. With 19 up and down units being proposed, essentially, that would, there's a potential for that to turn into 38 vacation rentals or transient rentals. Excuse me. That's a concern for my family. Speaking only for them, while we currently love the location, we're very concerned with this proposed development and how it could turn the neighborhood into a transient village of sorts. You start talking about that many transient rentals, it kind of defeats the purpose of the progress of the neighborhood that's really starting to take shape. So, with that, I would ask the commission, consider a motion to amend the proposed legislation to include that a condition be required for rezoning to maybe RMF or otherwise that would specifically exclude transient rentals and align more with the developer's proposed use. If the city and developer truly are looking to build this neighborhood for the residents, this should be an easy amendment to make. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stanley. Additional comments from the public on agenda items? Commissioners, you have before you several communications from staff recommending various pieces of legislation. Can I have a motion to accept these communications?
So, move.
Second? And a motion and a second discussion. Not objection, motion be approved in hearing, no objection, that motion is approved. Commissioners, we have six items on the consent agenda this evening. Do any of you wish to move any of these items to the regular agenda? Ms. Myers, you present the consent agenda.
Yes, Mr. President. Item A, approval of 2025 tax budget. Item B, approval to amend Chapter 193 of the codified ordinances. Item C, approval of easement agreements for Sandusky Bay Pathway with thermal color. Item D, approval of easement agreements for Sandusky Bay Pathway with SHM. Item E, approval of change order one and final on Butler Street project with Great Lakes demolition. Item F, approval of encroachment license agreement with St. Mary Catholic Schools.
Commissioners, having heard these ordinances and a resolution, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Murray?
I move for the adoption of these ordinances and the single resolution of section, or items A through F pursuant to the code of the charter indicated in the communication.
There have been a motion and there's been a second discussion. Mr. Myers, you call the role on the motion, please.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Now, on the ordinances and resolution.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
Those ordinances and a resolution are passed.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
Mr. Crable.
On the consent agenda, I don't believe the motion included a requirement about sections 13 or 14, depending upon the item. Does that need to be in the motion?
Chairman, if I may?
Mr. Murray?
I believe I did indicate pursuant to the section indicated in the communication.
That's how it was framed. So, it falls into whatever section it's mentioned in that, the motions for that.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Myers, you present item number one of the regular agenda.
It is requested a resolution be passed adopting the amended Rules of Order for the Sandusky City Commission and declaring that this resolution shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this resolution, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddy?
This is for discussion only. What I have, right, is not going to be a vote tonight.
That's correct. We're just asking for a motion, is all, to begin discussion.
I'll make that motion open discussion.
Second? And a motion and a second? Now, we'll have a discussion. Ms. Fargo, it sounds like you wanted to say something? No?
I will.
Okay.
Mr. Chair. So, I don't want this to become something that is not what it is, and the way I brought it to the floor, to the commission. We are not getting rid of Robert's Rules of Order regardless of what we read in the press over the weekend. What I will say is, though, the only time this is ever used is when we, as commissioners, speak and have questions for our staff. Since I've arrived here, no one has ever said through the chair that's come up to talk to us and ask questions. The other thing I will say is, this has been here since only 2020, so we have been, before that, I don't, I don't know how we, you know, we apparently got by without it. So, I do believe that we are in a situation where we would just like to be able to talk to staff and have cohesive dialogue without some interruption. And I believe that we can all do that very respectfully, and nothing is changing around Chairman Brady's opportunity to control the meeting. We would never forego that. That's not going to happen. It is just about three words with the staff, and again, we've not heard it anywhere else. So, it's been a little confusing out to the public, and, you know, I've heard everything from Robert's Rules are gone to, you know, you're not recognizing the chairperson, and that is not true. And so, it's a simple little thing that we would like to change, ask commission. And maybe not everyone supports that, but I believe the majority do.
Additional comments, commissioners?
If I may?
Commissioner Crable?
Much has been said, and much has been said, and I really appreciate the input that we've had here this evening. And I know that this is, that the contrary opinion on this matter. It's been suggested that the reason that these three words exist is to maintain order in the meeting, to prevent people from coming up in front of our chair and yelling at him. If we get to that point, I think we have the chief here to deal with that, that kind of issue. This is a unique community. We kind of all know each other at one level or another. I go back to Commissioner Vargo's comments that we didn't need this, you know, three years ago and beyond, going into the, into the past. And I don't think we need it now. I do have a question. The last sentence that reads, "The president reserves the right to declare any question or responses being out of order under the rules." I don't believe that that was part of the conversation at our last meeting. Now, is that something that our attorney feels is important to be put in there? Because I don't think there's any question about, from anyone on this board, about, you know, what the, the chair's authority is in this matter.
Mr. Hastings?
Yes.
Through the chair.
Through the chair. My response to Mr. Crable is, yeah, I added that for the purpose of hopefully reminding everyone that even though we're having direct conversations, not through the chair, that the chair is still in charge of the meeting and reserves the right to maintain order. That's why the rules exist. When I did research as the origin of the through-the-chair language, which is in Section 312 of Robert's Rules, the various sources describe it as a reminder that it's through the chair that you get to ask the question. You get recognized by the chair, then you get to ask the question, and then the person responds to the chair. It gives the chair a moment to decide if things are out of order, if a question is out of order, if a response is out of order.
Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Waddy?
I'm looking forward to this change. I know it's small, but as Ms. Vargo said, when I read it in the paper, I was like, you know, I couldn't believe how it was taken. And then, out in the public, I talked to a lot of people, and they assumed, like Mr. Crable said, that we were taking, eliminating Robert's Rules of Order. We're not. It's just that one section. If you recognize me, and I have a question for Mr. Klein, and then he says through you, "Mr. Chair," then, you know, I got one question, and I don't think that I'm out of line asking a question at a, you know, at this city commission table. You know, if it's offensive, I think I can accept, you know, somebody wants to jump on me, or everybody here thinks I'm wrong. But anyway, that's what I think. Just to clean that up, I know it's been four years. I'm sure it comes from the Cleveland area. I'm probably guessing, but I went back and looked at some old video and looked at some stuff from the past, and it just, I think it come about, about four years ago, around 2020, is my guess. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Coons?
Question related to what Commissioner Crable asked, as it relates to this section. However, Robert's Rules of Order 3-12 is modified so that members of the commission, when recognized, may speak directly to persons in attendance without going through the president. The president reserves the right to declare any question or response as being out of order under the rules. I agree with Mr. Poole in what he said, that that change is in order. But another question related to, and I noticed the language here, it says, "The president as persuasive shall be referenced by the president as persuasive rather than binding." That's crucial. And it made me think about something the other gentleman said about the president serving as one who is impartial, right? And so, when there's a comment made that is not, it doesn't indicate that the president's being impartial, right, number one, then I'm going to have, I'm going to have a problem with it. And I'm going to have a problem with it because we serve as a body, not as one. And so, I think just as, as a suggestion, that one of the things that could happen if we're crossing that line where some body considers the president, considers something out of order, to ask, I like that question, what is the commission's pleasure? Because I think those kinds of questions should be entertained by the entire body to determine if something is really out of order. I don't think, since I've been on here, you know, you can tell me if I'm wrong, that I said anything that was kind of just wrong or a jab at somebody. I'm literally trying to get information as the novice commissioner. And so, that particular section is important to me. And I just want some feedback from you regarding that, but it's important to have that section that says persuasive rather than binding. Can you just tell me how we'll move forward with that? My suggestion is just to say, what is the commission's pleasure? As it relates to this question that's been brought to the table, as opposed to, that's out of order, then move on.
I believe, Commissioner Coons, I believe there is a recourse. If the president declares a person out of order, our, our rules have a provision in there that give you a recourse, and that is, by a majority vote of the commission, the president can be overruled. I think that's, I think that's your recourse.
Yeah, that's true.
That's your Hail Mary, saving grace, life, life preserver, if you would.
Okay.
In a, in a situation like that. But talk about time-consuming, I can't imagine how time-consuming it might be if we're, if we're required to vote as a body on each issue of whether it's in order or out of order to answer a question.
Yeah, I only recall that one moment that we had to entertain that.
So, there is a provision there to, to overrule the president by a majority vote.
Right, right. We just didn't have that conversation when it occurred before.
Yes. Additional comments, commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I just have one more question, and I, and I wanted to just bring it to the entire commission, because I did talk to Mr. Hastings about the, the language in that last sentence. The president reserves the right to declare any question or responses being out of order, which it should be, under the rules. And, and, and so, I think, under the rules, I told him, it's, to me, it seems a little ambiguous, because we're talking about Robert's Rules, but then we have our own charter rules as well. So, I just wonder what it should actually say there, under which rules, under Robert's Rules or under the rules could be interpreted differently by different people. So, I'm concerned about that, if we could...
Mr. Hastings, can you provide some clarity?
Yeah, I mean, I intentionally drafted that without identifying, because there are two sets of rules involved here. There are the Sandusky Rules of Order adopted by the commission four years ago, and then there are Robert's Rules that are incorporated into our rules by those rules. And so, I just said, rules to include them all.
Okay. But that actually is a Robert's Rule, that right there. That comes from the Robert's Rule. So, I would say we would make that Robert's Rules there, if everyone...
You could change that to Robert's Rules if you want.
Okay, thank you. I would if, if, I don't know if we need to do an amendment.
Yeah, just make a motion.
We missed change it.
Do that through a motion?
Yeah, do that through a motion.
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we change that verbiage at the bottom under the rules to Robert's Rules in 2.02 there.
Second?
Motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you call the role on that motion, please.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Excuse me, can we vote on anything? I thought this was a discussion.
This is to change to the language.
We have a motion to amend, that's what we're voting on.
Okay. All right, yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That motion is passed, and that is amended. Additional comments or concerns regarding this piece of legislation? I think, I think I've already shared my comments, my feelings with, privately with each commissioner here, so I think you know where I stand on that. But for the record, I appreciate Mr. Burkey's analogy, and I especially liked your analogy to the chairman being the umpire and calling balls and strikes. And oftentimes, that is what you're doing as a chairman. You are, it may not look like it, but you are deciphering what that question is, what the intent of that question is, what the response may or may not be, is a legitimate question, is a personal attack. Those are all things that you, as a chairperson, you're cycling through rather quickly. And by eliminating just those three words, it sounds like a small item, a small, a small ask, but you're speeding the game up. And I think that anything that, this, this chairman position has only a very few responsibilities. One is maintaining order in this meeting. And anything that denigrates that or takes away from the chairperson, either myself or someone in the future's ability to do that effectively, I think is a disservice to this, to this commission and future commissions. And in addition to the chairperson having the responsibility to maintain order, another thing that a chairperson will always struggle with is finding the will of the commission. And I can read what the will is. And I think that the will of the commission is to move forward with this, even though I am going to oppose it. I certainly understand that, appreciate that, and, and the vote, when we take that vote at our next meeting, will be what it's going to be. Additional comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Joe?
We're talking about three words, maybe four, if you interject, "Mr. Chairman," instead of "through the chair." brought it to the commission table, what happened? I mean, why are we even discussing this if, if it wasn't done formally? If it was just kind of interjected along the way by, I don't know who? Can anybody answer that?
Don't have a clue.
Well, you know, I think that up until 2020, we didn't use that verbiage, and everything went along just fine. And, you know, you read the paper, there wasn't chaos or anarchy or anything like that. And I feel that if I know anything, I know that, Dick, you're the current mayor, and you can run a meeting. You don't need through the chairman to run a meeting. You, you have no problem using the gavel and, and bringing people in line if they need to be. So I don't, I don't think that'll be an issue. But I guess until somebody tells me how this happened, I don't even know why we're discussing it. To me, it's small potatoes. We, we got a lot of other big things to talk about, and if we can't even figure out how to get past this, then we're gonna, we're gonna have problems in the future.
Thank you, Commissioner Pajali. Additional comments?
Mr. Chair, one more.
Commissioner Coons.
He made me think about this, Commissioner Pajali, when he said small potatoes. And I'm wondering, as the rookie commissioner, one of the rookie commissioners, you know, it's the first time that I've seen actually no vote and bold right next to this. And so just so I'm understanding why, if it's small potatoes, why aren't we just getting it out of the way? So you can explain that to me, so I just know.
I'll take a stab at it, but I'll count on, I'll count on our law director to give you the real answer. But my understanding is our charter requires that this be done in two meetings and not in one. Mr. Hastings, can you speak to that?
Yeah, it's not our charter, it's the city commission rules of order that were passed in 2000. Section 2.04 says that the rules shall not be altered except by a vote of the majority of the members in the form of a resolution, and shall be submitted and read to the city commission at a meeting preceding the one at which it is acted upon. So our rules of order that we passed in 2020, which by the way, also to answer Commissioner Pajali's question, incorporated the latest edition of Robert's Rules of Order into the city commission rules of order, set up this two-step process to change them.
If I might just interject one quick thing in answer to Commissioner Pajali's comments. If that kind of formality is required to adopt changes, then four years ago, there should have been that same kind of formality, and it should show up in our, in two meetings minutes.
Well, no, it's not a, Mr. Chairman, sorry. It's, it's not in the charter, so the commission set up these rules then. They could have done it in one vote at that time.
Got it. I understand what you're saying. Do you understand that, Mr. Crable?
I guess I do, but then it begs the question, four years ago and, and earlier, we were just ignoring Robert's Rules?
I don't know the, I was not here, I don't know the answer.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either. I mean, I, I understand the question, though, that, that Mr. Pajali has on this.
I think we beat this horse to death.
Yeah.
There are no other items of, no more discussion on this. We will look forward to seeing this come back in two weeks, and we'll move to item number two.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an annexation agreement in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 709.192, with Perkins Township relating to the city's annexation of Erie County, Ohio, permanent parcel numbers 32-01427, period, 001, 32-01427, period, 000, 32-002214, period, 000, and 32-101484, period, 000. And declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Ms. Vargo, that's almost as cumbersome as chemicals that we buy for the sewer plant. Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I move for the passage of this ordinance pursuant to Section 14 of the city's charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
It was nice to see that we can, I know when I met with John last week, that we can work with Perkins Township. I believe we vote on this tonight, and they also vote on it tonight, too, at their meeting. So that'll be kind of nice. And then maybe down the road, we could work with Yerren Township, too, maybe heading that direction east and to get this pathway and biking and all that done. So I think it's gonna be neat.
Thank you, Mr. Waddington. Mr. Orzak, you want to give us a Reader's Digest version of what's going on here?
Yes, back in 2021, when we did the admissions tax, and we met with Cedar Fair, they had requested as part of that process for annexation of the portion of the indoor complex and then a portion of the outdoor complex. And then there's some small parcels on the east side of the outdoor complex. So we have been meeting with Perkins Township for about six months now, and the conversations went very well. Obviously, Perkins Township, you know, losing, losing land is not something that they enjoy, but we worked out a very favorable agreement with them, which has been provided. We, our intention from the beginning was to make them whole with their taxes, and we also protected them for any future development that would happen on that site, should there be any. We don't anticipate any, but it was important for us to make them comfortable and for any future development should it occur. So we had very good conversation, it was cordial, and they, the, we, we pretty much gave them exactly what they wanted. There's, you know, a lot of annexation processes that could happen, but this is something that is an agreement that both Sandusky and Perkins Township have agreed to. And then the process will go from Cedar Fair applying for the annexation of the parcels officially through the county. So that's where we're at, and, you know, we definitely appreciate the cooperation and collaboration with Perkins Township on this. They were very, very good to work with and very good partners.
John, is the next step for the property owner Cedar Fair, or now Six Flags, I guess, to file the proper documents requesting the annexation, is that the next step in this process?
Yeah, so once, if the commission approves this tonight, and Perkins Township agrees to their, their meetings at 6 o'clock, then we'll sign the agreement and give that to Cedar Fair or Six Flags, and then they'll file a formal annexation request as the property owners, which they have indicated that they want, wanted to do. This is just a step that's necessary before moving forward with the process. So the next step will be, once, once the agreement's in their hands, they file the annexation, it goes to the county commissioners, and then that process takes place. It shouldn't be, I don't remember the timeframe, but I think 30 days or 60 days, somewhere in that timeframe, once they file.
Great. Additional comments or questions, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Waddington.
John, when I talked to you last week, it's a possibility, since we've taken Sports Force over, that it's going to generate upwards of $100,000 in taxes?
Yes, so part of the property is the indoor, or the outdoor complex, and some income tax from the indoor complex, mainly the portion where Firelands Hospital has their, or Firelands Health has their staff. So we'll get some income tax from there, we'll get some admissions tax from the outdoor complex. Michelle thinks around $100,000 or so, and then obviously we'll pay the township around 30, you know, $37,461.38.
Excellent. Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to commend John for the work he did on this. I know he inherited this project, and there were a number of twists and turns along the way, and he managed to navigate his way through that, so you did, you did a nice job on this.
Additional comments, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Vargo.
I was gonna say the same thing, thank you, John. And I, when you talk annexation, a lot of people get very nervous about that and defensive, and it can be a very tumultuous situation. But the one good thing about it now, too, is that entire campus, if you will, has consistent safety services from us, and that's, that's a really good thing, no confusion about who's coming, if there's an issue with anything. So I think that's really important as well.
Yeah. Additional comments?
Chairman.
Commissioner Murray.
One last thought, I echo all of the comments that were made thus far. But I think this is a good example that government relations are not a zero-sum game. So many people in our society, so many people at every level of government, that present government decisions as a zero-sum game. It's a wrong way to look at the world. This, this is a net benefit for all involved. You can have a win-win-win, which is exactly what this is. And I think that this is an important moment in our relationship with Perkins Township, because I met several of the, two of the committees specifically, since this occurred, very, very appreciative, looking forward to doing additional business with the city. Not sure what that's going to look like, but when we take that attitude, we open up a whole vista of possibilities that didn't exist otherwise. This possibility, this deal could not have been reached 15 years ago. There's been a sea change in the relationship between the two governments, and that's a great thing.
I'd like to make perfectly clear to, Commissioner Vargo brought up a good point, this, the concept of the safety services being now provided by the city, both fire and police. And I want to be perfectly clear, this is not, this is not to denigrate at all Perkins Township's safety services. I've worked for them and with them on both fire and police, and they are excellent. This is about geography, and the geography indicates that there are three blockages to their safety services getting to this facility from, from their stations. It's Remington Avenue, it's Pipe Street, and it's Perkins Avenue. And the fact that we now have a, a relationship with, with Six Flags to provide police protection on all their properties makes all the sense in the world. Our response time will, will be unabated by, by train traffic. And I think that is not the deciding factor in this annexation, but it certainly is one of the spokes in the wheel, so to speak. Additional comments? Commissioner Crable?
Again, I, too, echo everything that's been said here. It's a little bit of a watershed here, that, you know, we have this kind of an item on our agenda, and I look forward with great satisfaction to, you know, what can come, you know, in the future, should it come.
Additional comments? Ms. Vargo, you poll the commission on that motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Vargo, yes. Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Vargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Pajali?
Yes.
Mr. Coons?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And ordinance is passed. Ms. Vargo, you present item number three.
It is requested an ordinance be passed declaring that certain real property owned by the city located on East Washington Street at the east and west corners of Warren Street, parcel numbers 56-00983, 56-1383, and 5600984 are no longer needed for any municipal purpose, approving a developer agreement with Key State Development LLC, doing business as Key State Homes, for the development of residential housing on the Iron District located on East Washington Street and Warren Street, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Joe.
I would move to adopt this ordinance in accordance with Section 14 of the city charter.
Second.
Been a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Gilson, I wonder if you could share with us the zoning situation on that property and how that, how and if that, we've considered the impact of transient rental and that kind of density of transient rental in about a two-acre site.
Sure, I'd be happy to, through the chair. So the RFP for this property was released in 2022, and the responses that we received, three responses scored them and selected Key State Homes as the highest score. And I do want to draw your attention to the fact that it is zone commercial services and is able to be transient rented, as are the majority of the properties in and around the area. From the proposal, however, they do write that their approach is to take cues from the neighboring residential building fabric, from single-family homes to small multifamily properties, and introduce a product and development pattern that complements and supports those typologies. And they go on to say, "Each lot will contain a main residential structure comprised of an up-and-down unit configuration. The ability to add a garden apartment..." This is not guaranteed that there will be a garden apartment, but the ability to add a garden unit not only increases the residential density of the site, but adds a later, layer of affordability by providing opportunity to finance homeownership while creating neighborhoods throughout the area to attract first-time home buyers. So again, there is the opportunity to transient rent, but the intention by the developer and the intention we put forward in this RFP is to create homeownership opportunities where the units would be occupied by those that are purchasing those units.
So if I understand correctly, Ms. Gilson, then someone purchases the home, they could rent the home as a transient rental home, and they could rent the apartment as a transient rental apartment?
They could.
Which happens a lot in, in transient rental communities.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
Let me point out that this entire process has to go through the planning commission. It has to be, you could not build the structures suggested at this point in time without a planned unit development. That has to come through the planning commission, and it has to come back to this commission for approval. I think Mr. Stanley makes a good point. I don't ultimately think that there should be transient rental at this property. I expect that that will be worked into the planned unit development that's approved by the planning commission. And if it isn't, and it comes back here and it's still subject to transient rental, I'll vote no. And that, this commission retains that control over that process. So I would like to send a strong message to the planning commission and the developer that we do support residential development. I think that we've had it up to here with, with transient rentals, and I think the community's had it up to here with transient rentals. And I think that, I'm gonna add a point, a conversation with one of the city's employees, and I want to put him on the, on the spot, but I understand that we recently acquired some software that has the ability to identify a lot of other transient rentals that exist in the city, many, many, many more than are registered at the moment. So I'm looking forward to being able to make some more progress on that front, but I don't, I don't want to retreat here.
Additional comments, Commissioner? I agree, Mr. Murray, I think there's a lot of steps before we get to the finish line with this. And I would point out, I do recall reading that one of the, someone's thought anyway was, one of the prohibitions of this being transient rental was the higher-end type of unit, $450,000 to $600,000. I can share with you, that's not going to stop someone from turning that house into a transient rental. There are million-dollar houses, $2 million houses that are being transient rented all over this country. So the value of the home or the quality of the home is not going to eliminate transient rental. What's going to eliminate transient rental is going to be the planning commission, or change in zoning, or some type of deed restriction, or some type of effort to, you know, to control that and curtail that. And I, I, I can't imagine the potential of 38 transient rentals on a piece of property that's this big, literally. So I think it would be, I think it would be burdensome for the city. Additional comments? Commissioner Crable?
Direct my question to Commissioner Murray on this, because I simply don't have the history to make the judgment on this. Are we confident that as a body, we and/or the planning commission can control who or whether or not there, there is transient rental? Because there's, there's also the court system that, you know, should someone make application to, you know, put transient rental in here, and they're not satisfied through the city's efforts, that they could go to the courts. And I have a secondary question, and I'm not sure whether this is something for Mr. Murray or for Ms. Gilson. How again did the zoning come to occur, the current zoning that would allow for transient rental? In any event, I have two questions out there.
Ms. Gilson, you probably know that answer, and I just, I give you the postage stamp answer is that what is allowed for transient rental is built into the transient rental ordinance, and it's specific that this type of zoning, you know, unfortunately allows that.
Right.
Or fortunately allows.
But could it not be a different type of zoning and avoid that issue?
That would require a change of zoning.
How far back does this particular zoning go?
I honestly cannot answer that question. I would have to look that up on the spot. I couldn't answer that question for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
I don't have a real estate practice, so take what I say with a grain of salt.
Sure.
But my understanding, just generally, taking a 60,000-foot look at this, you can't have this kind of density with the current zoning unless you have a planned unit development. And it's the planned unit development that I understand has, gives us the ability to put restrictions on that. I think that we could put in that no transient rental. I'm not 100% certain about that, and I'm looking to the two experts in the room.
Ms. Gilson.
You could, in that process, make deed restrictions on those, to prohibit transient rental.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. John.
I don't know, it hasn't come before the Planning Commission. I don't know, are they, are they thinking about coming as a PUD?
We have had those early conversations with the developer.
Yeah, if it's a PUD, then you can regulate what the zoning is within the PUD, or you can have different, all different kinds of zoning within it. And I think just for a little background, there's six zones currently where you can have transient housing. Now, the overlay zone, we have a moratorium on, and I did talk to Mr. Hastings last week about that, and I hope to have something before the time period runs out to 18 months. That's a little different than what we're talking about, but in these six zones, it's allowable right now, and that's one of those zones. So the only other comment I would have, in order to change that zoning, I guess you could do it by PUD, or that request would have to be done through the Planning Commission and then on to the City Commission. So at that juncture, somebody's going to have to either make a request to change the zoning, or if it comes as a PUD, we can deal with it there.
Ms. Gilson, I don't, I think you probably are better qualified than any of us. You've talked to the developer, and I don't think any of us are trying to throw a cold blanket over this opportunity.
No.
I'm personally thrilled with it. 19 new residents in the heart of Sandusky is, imagine that 10 years ago. But this doesn't, this is not a deal killer for them, I wouldn't think. They seem to be saying, maybe not real loudly, but at least they're saying out loud that we're not building an apartment complex here, we're building single-family homes.
I can't, well, I don't feel comfortable speaking for the developer, but that is not the impression that I got.
Okay.
Quite honestly, one of the proposals that we did receive incorporated an apartment building. It didn't score as highly. We went with the lower density based on what was being offered. But again, I don't feel comfortable speaking with them, but I did not get the impression that that is the intention. Homeownership, residential structures, with the opportunity to provide a garden apartment so that someone could supplement their income and perhaps qualify for more home by having that rental income.
Thank you.
That was the intention.
Mr. Crable?
Yes. Would the developer be averse to or including some kind of language about a deed restriction?
I'm not comfortable, I don't know. I would have to speak with the developer.
I'm not sure where to go with this. I'm very supportive of the project. I mean, incredibly supportive. I think this is a wonderful outcome for the city, for the residents, ultimately for the neighbors. But a good question has been raised, and I'm not quite sure where to go.
Well, I think where we're going with it is, I mean, you can't predict the future, certainly. I can't hardly predict the past. I think we understand that this project has to go before the Planning Commission. It has to pass their muster. We're sending a signal by our discussions here tonight, I think, what our concerns are.
Okay.
The Planning Commission, liaison Mr. Bajali, I believe, will take those concerns to them. And it has to pass their muster, and it has to come back to the City Commission. So I don't think, I don't think it's necessary for us to throw a roadblock up in front of them.
Okay.
But they'll know by tomorrow that our eyes are wide open.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. John.
I would just say that through, I'm sure Ms. Gilson will talk to Ms. Blair about what our sentiments are, so that she's aware when this comes before Planning Commission, that there has been this discussion, and then I guess we'll talk then.
It's fine.
I happen to know that Ms. Blair's watching upstairs.
Got that, Ms. Blair? Any more questions or discussion? Ms. Myers, you call a roll in the motion, please.
Yes, Mr. President. Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. We look forward to seeing the next step. Ms. Myers, you present item number four, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement with Cedar Point Park LLC for the property known as Farwell Park, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kuntz?
Move for adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules as contained in accordance with Section 14, City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I've recently learned that we're going to be putting new hoops up out there, much-needed backboards, and I know when we do the cleanups, we try to hit that once or twice a year, the litter there, but never really that bad, just that little wooded area. But I think the new hoops is going to enhance the park, and then maybe down the road, that's kind of like in a corner, some lights or, you know, maybe, not to light the court up, but just for safety reasons, be something maybe to look at.
Additional comments, Commissioner? Mr. Orzak, this a 10- or 15-year lease?
20.
20-year lease.
It's a 20-year lease. We've been without a lease with Cedar Point for about 15 years, so.
Like, of all the money we've.
We had a lot of investment that we were planning on making at Farwell Park, so we wanted to, we looked at it, and it's like, we wanted to make sure that we're protected with our investment. So Mr. Hastings wrote, and Colleen wrote up an agreement with them. So we have a 20-year lease with Cedar Point to lease the park, and in the past, we only had five years, and then there were renewals. So it's a, it's a good partnership and a good opportunity to invest there and know that our investment's going to be around for a while.
Great, thank you, Mr. Orzak. Ms. Myers, you call a roll in the motion, please.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. Ms. Myers, you present item number five, please.
It is requested an ordinance be passed authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into an agreement for professional services with American Structure Point Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, for the primary digester number two structural investigation at the West wastewater treatment plant, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this ordinance, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of rules and full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Mr. Klein, this is not for fixing the digester, it's just for finding out what's wrong with it or how long it's going to last?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. We have a digester that we took down several years ago to inspect the mechanical equipment. Now we're having trouble with the roof on that same digester. So we want to make sure that we're containing the gas that's leaking out of it, and we're doing that inspection through this contract. Hopefully, the contractor and inspection firm will be able to provide exactly what's needed, and we can come back to this body and request permission to proceed with a repair.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Comments or questions, Commissioners? Ms. Myers, you call a roll in that motion, please.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That ordinance is passed. concludes our agenda. We'll turn to our city manager for his report.
Good evening, Commissioners, audience, and staff. I have a $100 donation that was received from the Sandusky Memorial Day Association for both the Police Department and Fire Department for participation in the Memorial Day Parade, if I can get a motion to accept that donation. So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, motion be approved, and hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks for the $100.
Sandusky Parks and Rec would like to thank the Erie County Health Department, Jessica Sellmeyer, Aaron Chudzinski, Samantha Leo, and the Yingling family for their donation of popsicles and prize giveaways for summer break camp, if I can get a motion to accept those donations. So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. No objection, that motion be approved, hearing no objection, that motion is approved. Our thanks.
The next Finance Committee meeting will be held on Friday, July 12, at 8:00 at City Hall. On July 9, public works staff, along with consultants from the EPA, will begin canvassing throughout the city to complete the water service line inventory for all private service lines as mandated by the U.S. EPA. City staff will be wearing shirts with the city seal and have city-issued photo IDs. We encourage residents to fill out the inventory survey at www.cityofsandusky.com/waterlines. If residents complete the survey online, staff will not visit their address during the canvassing. And from Community Development, local artist Janaya Prentice has completed an art box project titled "A Beautiful Horizon," painted on the utility cabinet at the intersection of Mylan Road and Sycamore Line. We invite you to view the completed work. The art box program is facilitated by the Public Arts and Culture Commission, as documented in their annual work plan. That concludes my extensive report for this evening. I'll take any questions.
Questions or comments for the city manager? Now we'll move to items of old business, any items of old business, Commissioners. Any items of new business, Commissioners? I have a, I have a motion that I was going to make at last meeting, but I wanted you each to have the application of a person who had submitted an application for a position on our Community Relations Commission. I hope you've all had a chance to look at that. It is, I will ask for a motion to appoint Darcy Mundine to the Community Relations Commission.
So moved.
Second.
But a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Myers, you poll the commission on that motion.
Ms. Fargo?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Bajali?
Yes.
Mr. Kuntz?
Yes.
Mr. Crable?
Yes.
That motion is approved, and Ms. Mundine is appointed to the Community Relations Commission. Another item of new business that I will at least point out to you, and that is that each of us, I think about five minutes before we sat down, received the recommendations from our Recreation Center Advisory Committee. And I would ask each of you to spend some time reviewing that. I would like to have a discussion regarding that at our next meeting in two weeks, so some homework for all of us. Additional items of new business? No additional items of new business. We will turn to audience comments on any item pertaining to city business.
Wes Poole, 1939, East Oak Gate. I just have some thoughts about the developer agreement with Key State. With regard to the, the commission has made some general comments about some concerns that they have, that we've assumed that each, that committee members, other committees are going to follow up on. May I suggest that historically, that doesn't seem to be the case. There's, and oftentimes, because I watch those meetings, it's like, they'll make decisions, well, the commission's going to get this later, and they'll make the decision whether we do or not. So I'm not sure you're going to get any in-depth thoughts. I would ask that perhaps sometime you consider that the issue is whether or not we're going to allow, whether it's a good thing or not, to have transient rental. I think that's what the gentleman came to the podium spoke of. And clarity from you folks at this point about what to do would be really nice. It's a matter of talking about in general terms of, well, maybe a PUD, do it, and maybe we could do this, and we'll kick this down the road. I think historically does not work out real well. Do you want transient, are you going to allow transient rental there or not? And then all the people down the line can make arrangements, so these other committees can go from that. Right now, we have no real idea what this commission thinks about it. We've got, we recognize you've got some concerns. I would suggest that also, just a matter of bringing a project that you folks are looking at today, that has got this big of a hole in it in terms of people's concerns about zoning, you know, whether or not it's going to change or not, whether transient rental is good. I would have liked to have seen or thought that that would have been already discussed and already worked out, those little problems. I mean, it's not like we don't know that zoning matters. I mean, how did we get this far down the line and have not thoroughly understood what's going to happen? The suggestion that, well, these are expensive homes, and perhaps they're not going to be turned into transient rentals, Mr. Brady was absolutely correct, you can just look at the Chesapeake. So really, from you as the leadership, the position of, do we want someone to just build something expensive in our town that generates tax revenue? Are we building homes in an environment in which people are willing to come here and live? And that's really what that transient rental and this zoning is about. Folks who decide that the zoning you put on there puts their very expensive property at risk in terms of the kind of life they want to live is the issue that we're, that you need to work out. And I'm not going to tell you what to do, but to sit here and have, and just talk about concerns, maybe without ever going into detail, about how do you want this to turn out? So that's just my sense. I appreciate you listening. Folks who decide that the zoning you put on there puts their very expensive property at risk in terms of the kind of life they want to live is the issue that we're, that you need to work out. And I'm not going to tell you what to do, but to sit here and have, and just talk about concerns, maybe without ever going into detail, about how do you want this to turn out? So, that's just my sense. I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Mr. Poole? Additional comments on any item pertaining to city business?
I have something to say.
But you can step into the podium and share with us your name and address, and you've got five minutes.
My name is Danielle Murray. I am an Erie County, Ohio resident, address 603 East Washington. I am here as a concerned citizen. I am here on behalf of humanity, but I am here on behalf of a Palestinian family, nor her husband Mohammed and their baby Sarah. In case you're unaware, what is happening in Gaza/Palestine.
Right in order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Murray.
This is not something that pertains to city business.
Mr. Murray, this has nothing to do with city business, and this timeframe is set aside for items that relate to city business. This is perhaps a humanitarian issue, but not city business.
I disagree. I think that everyone should be concerned what is happening in Palestine right now. There, it is not a war, it is not a conflict, it is a genocide, and people.
And you're certainly entitled to that opinion, but.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact.
But it has nothing to do with city business. Mr. Hastings, am I?
Mr. President, your ruling controls under our rules of order.
I'm sorry, but.
Can I say one more thing? No one in here has spoken out against the genocide. We have a moral obligation to speak out. 15,000 children have been died.
You're out of order. Thank you.
15,000. See, it worked. There you go. Good job.
Greetings, everyone. Tom LaMarcus, 20648 Street. The Perkins annexation agreement's a good agreement, from what I can see, and it's something that, with annexation with Perkins, has been tried or attempted many different ways for as long as I've been around. So, I remember back being a child in school and talking annexation, didn't know what it was. But let me ask you this. Have you really calculated, and I heard a little bit of discussion about the safety services, and I know that Perkins has always had police vehicles out there during baseball games and the like. Have we taken that into consideration for additional manpower needed for that? And then the number of EMS calls that take place out at that Sports Forest Park? Many times, Perkins uses all of their equipment, and, you know, then they're at the reciprocity agreement of rushing out to Perkins to handle a call. So, I'm just curious as to whether we are prepared for that. The next thing that still bothers me, and I hope that the commission will take another look at the cop agreement with the legal building, the adminis, whatever you want to call the Police Department building on Meg Street, the safety services building. You're literally giving away one of the last pieces of real estate that the city owns over brick and mortar and window improvements. I mean, that's what you're really doing. You're saying, I ordered some windows, I don't want to pay the bill, but I'll let somebody else pay the bill, and I'll give them our building, and then we'll lease back our building, and at the end of the lease, what do we have? We have a pile of cash checks for the lease payments, but we don't own a building anymore. That's, that's a terrible agreement. I don't understand that. You know, if you look at Battery Park, we gave Maru's Brothers Battery Park, and what have we ended up with so far with that? Not, not a darn thing. I mean, they're making money, a little bit of money right now with the dockage, but I understand there's some issues with dockage for next year. They're already telling people, if you don't have a certain type of boat or length, that you're not going to be welcome in Battery Park. So, please, please reconsider that, any way you can get out of that. That's a terrible deal. I'll also ask if you've reconsidered or taken a second look at the Columbus Avenue streetscape project and not including new water and sewer lines. Sure, as we put in all the pretty new lipstick on the street and the new windows and the flower gardens, what have you, and somebody is going to come in and, thankfully perhaps, lease Hogreef's building, that big space, and then the sewage line's going to bust because it's 100 years old or 80 years old, and we're going to have to tear up all that nice, new $5 million infrastructure or pretty work. Take another look at that. Then, someone asked me, do we still have police bikes? I don't know if we still have the police bikes, but I know you have Thursday night rides, so maybe you use them then. I know that a few months ago, that the law director hired a new assistant law director, and I've seen that person attend one of these meetings one time. And I'm curious as to why that person, being as young as he or she, it's a she, as young as she is, why she's not attending these meetings, especially this one tonight, would have been a good learning experience, in my opinion, of all the different things that were discussed at this table tonight. It was a great learning opportunity for someone. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus.
Thank you.
Additional comments from the public on any item that pertains to city business?
Hello. My name is Marcy Platt. I live at 1217 Columbus Avenue. I had a question for Mr. Klein. When they were doing the bicentennial plan, and they included in that the Bay Shore Corridor, they had set up for pollution, looked like an aerator in the west side of the bay, and an aerator on the east side of the bay, to try to help with the amount of harmful algae. I've not seen any plans since, and I have not seen an aerator of either type, so I was just wondering if that was still in the works or not. Anybody that's been near that water, either side of the bay, it's awful. In fact, I think most doctors would tell their kids, don't, don't swim in it. I used to, when I was 19 years old, checked, because my first degree is in environmental health, and I would go out and unpaid test the water. And when the water looks bad, it is bad. There's no doubt about it. There is algae in there, there's bacteria, so I just wondered about that. The other thing is, I wanted to thank Katie Vargo for bringing up the opportunity to discuss things instead of it being one way all the time. This is, I have one last thing, and I brought this before the commission in the past. Living in the 1200 block of Columbus Avenue is not a very easy thing to do. A vehicle showed up in my sidewalk a couple Sundays about 1:00 in the morning, and I learnt through the glyph dispatch that there had been a big fight at the 1200 block of Mylan Road, where there were guns, that people noted. The guy hit in a utility pole, and it ended up leaving his car there. So, I called the police, and they came. By then, the guy had already come back, gotten all of his stuff out of the car, most of it anyhow. And this isn't anything against you, Jared, I think you guys do a great job. But I think there's this thing that the only, you know, yeah, we've hid some stuff downtown, but it's pouring out to the neighborhoods, too. My thing that I've talked in the past about is the fireworks. The city of Sandusky, according to everything I've read on it, I've tried to read a lot, you have the option to opt out of this. And I want to tell you how bad it was. One of the, from everything I saw in the glyph reports, the guys would say, I hope that, we can't enforce this as a law because it's not against the law. That was not true. In order to be within the law, you have to do it on your own property, or you have to do it with the permission of the person's property you're going to do it on. They did it at the Nehemiah Center, they did it on the corner in the middle of the street on Ging and Townsend, which has been going on forever. They did it in J.C. Park, and they did it on Tyler Street on the sidewalk. And I thought, what the heck, I'll just drive around. There's little kids all around this. In fact, a gentleman approached me on a bike, had a cigarette in one hand, he had an alcoholic beverage on the other, and said, you don't look very happy. And I didn't say anything derogatory. He said, whatever. He goes, oh, I got $175 worth of fireworks I'm going to put up over at the hospital, that's where I live. And there was a glyph report in there that the helicopter, whoever uses the medical helicopter, had reported that they were not going to lift that helicopter if there were any fireworks around there. Like I said, you have the option to opt out of this. A lot of area communities have, and things have not been as bad. But the dogs, I didn't get a July 4, I'd be inside with my dog most of the time. Or, I don't know what they're using anymore, but it sounds like a bomb going off, and that is confirmed by the veterans that I see every day in my office.
Ms. Platt, I wonder if you can wrap this up.
Yeah, that's it. I just would really like for you to consider opting out of it, because they're not following the law.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Additional comments on any items that pertain to city business?
I live at 635 East Market Street. My wife and I recently renovated her childhood home, and I want to, I lived 30 years in here in township, and I wanted to compliment you guys on what has happened in the city in the last 20 years. It has been amazing. We are tickled to death to live down there, and I wanted to thank you guys for what you've done and keep up the good work. But I do have a question. Of course.
I feel like there was a but there.
You know, the construction staging that is happening, that happened in the Battery Park parking lot, obviously, is gone now. There's the gravel entrance from Market Street. Is there any plans to pave that now that those guys are gone? Only because it's creating a lot of dust that ends up in my windows, but I was just curious about that.
I don't know the answer to that question, but it certainly is a somewhat of environmental question.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Klein, our engineer, not putting him on the spot with that, but we've got your name and address, and I'll have him respond to you and respond to us, so that we can answer that question also.
And one more question. The parking lot on the corner, the, what is it, the south, help me out here, southwest corner where the Maritime Museum lot is, is that city property? Is it, who owns, I guess, the question is, who's responsible for keeping the weeds down and keeping the grass mowed and that type of stuff?
Jeff, is that your responsibility?
No. No, but I can see why.
He's the next lot forward.
Well, if I got to do what Jeff does and go out and cut the grass myself, I can't.
Mr. Orzak, do we own that lot?
I believe we own a portion of the lot, and a portion of the lot's owned by the senior